With that, I call to order this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is February 9th, 7:36 PM. Sorry for being a little late, folks. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President Haley?
Here.
Councilwoman Clough?
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman Bailey?
Here.
All members present.
Item four on the agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings. Letter A from the work session of January 7th, January 8th, January 12th, January 14th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meetings.
Second?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify. That is done. By a count of five to zero to zero, the motion carries. Letter B, the meetings or the minutes for the regular sessions of January 12th, January 26th, and February 2nd, 2015.
So moved for approval?
Second?
Moved. Any discussion? No. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The minutes are approved. Item five on the agenda is our consent agenda.
I move we approve the items that appear on the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved. Any discussion? No. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. And that brings us to item six, licenses. Letter A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Oceans Run Half Marathon and 5K Road Race on Sunday, March 8th, 2015 at 8:00 AM. This is by Tri-Mon Productions, and it's subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town issuing of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the risk manager and approval by the town's Traffic and Transportation Review Committee. The application is by Kathy Robbins. Kathy, are you present?
Good evening. How are you?
So please tell us a little bit about the race.
Sure. Kathy Robbins from Tri-Mon Productions. I have been working with the Parks and Rec Commission, the police, and the town on this event for eight years now. No issues, no problems. So it's a great half marathon utilizes the town beach, 8:00 morning, we're done by 11:00. Smooth and quiet.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes. Kathy, how many participants in this triathlon?
It's a half marathon. This is the half marathon and a 5K. We get about 800. We got 700 for the half and about 100 for the 5K. And we also have a little kids fun run, but that just stays within the beach.
And what kind of contribution or registration fee do they have to pay?
It starts at, the earlier they register, the cheaper that it is. So it starts at 40, moves through 50, on race day at 60.
Any other questions?
I have heard from a lot of the business owners today. I've had a lot of people calling me raising concerns about not being able to get to their businesses, employees not being able to get to work. I actually, I mean, I was on the phone all afternoon. I had people calling me and emailing me, just concerned about their livelihood being infringed upon with these races, not just this one, but also the other one you do in July. They were all just very concerned that there were problems with it, that they felt that they would have to pretty much close their businesses on the mornings.
Rachel, that's not for this race. And also, we can talk about the crab man. I'm perfectly willing to talk about all those races. There is nobody that works harder to address all the concerns of the businesses, of the community, of the racers, of the town than I do. This is what I do 15 times a year. I'm trusted by state police, by all these charities. So nobody works harder to make sure that those things don't happen. This race is at 8:00 in the morning in Matunik. We're out past the mist and all those by 8:30. We're into Green Hill. And to be honest, I always have great follow-up sessions with everybody. These are not concerns from this event because if they ever were, we would always address them. And the only thing that I have heard, and it wasn't even a concern, but the chief did ask me, "Well, what about the mass at 10:00 o'clock?" "Hey, no problem. We'll move it to 8:00." There's nobody more willing and more cognizant of the impact that events have. So there's so many moving parts to it that I don't pretend that it's just the race and race day, Rachel. I spend an enourdiment amount of time addressing safety and all of these concerns. So I tend to not agree with that. And if I had heard anything over eight years with this event, I just, that's not a concern for this event.
I'm just, yeah, I did hear it today. And I appreciate this is your business. You do it very well. But it is a business. So I don't like the idea of one business being allowed to infringe on another business. That's all. If I couldn't get to my business, physically get there, that would be a problem.
But that's not, but that doesn't.
That's what I heard. So I'm only basing it on what I heard. I got phone calls all afternoon, and that's what I was hearing.
I appreciate that. And I don't think that the chief, that the recreation department, that the town would put a stamp on an event that they thought infringed so powerfully that people couldn't get to their business. So I understand that, what you're saying, but that's not, I understand there's concerns with other races and, I don't know what they do. I know what I do. And I know I address it constantly with every event, every, there's no problem that every year we just say, "Well, what can we do to even make it better?" Because there's not these things.
Well, possibly it's grown. You know, maybe in the beginning, it wasn't a problem. And maybe it's the amount of participants, because I would guess that 800 people down there is a lot. I mean, it's a great success to you and your business, but you know, possibly that's the problem.
All events run in a bell curve. So whether you have 10 people or 800 people, there's these fast people, the majority of people are in this bell curve. So the time literally does not change that we are out on these courses. And in fact, to again, to address any concerns, I've actually taken the end of the pack, moved them, the walkers, to the beginning of the pack to actually shorten the event so that they get absorbed, so we're not even out there even longer. So technically, the race is now only about two and a half hours. And through Matunik, where I can see the mist and the Joyce and Seaview, we are literally out of there by 8:30 on a very slow day. So it's really, it's a half of an hour. There's, it's the safest, there's, we have addressed all these concerns constantly that we just don't hear these concerns. I appreciate, I just don't think it technically has to do with the Oceans Run.
Kathy, where do you, where do they park? Do you have?
They park at Matunik Elementary School, and we have a shuttle bus that runs. I mean, most people, I would hope that they would warm up and run down, but.
I have heard concerns, as Rachel has, not for the March 8th race. I have not heard people having a problem with that. The problem that I have heard is during July with the Crab Man race, which, you know, we have a short season. The businesses are, that's their livelihood during those.
Understood, Carol. And again, when in going through this, I've talked to the chief, I don't have these issues. But as the concerns in other parts and other races come up, I'm perfectly willing to address. I've already rerouted my Crab Man course in anticipation of this conversation to not be in Matunik at all. So that part of the course is completely gone, and I've already rerouted it. Again, this is what I do all, I don't want to be here talking and defending my races. I want to run smooth, fun, safe. And that's why I do get 800 people, and that's why I do have all these charities, because I do pay so much attention to the, you know, the object is to not aggravate anybody, to get, keep the athletes, the town, everybody, all these parts moving so smoothly. So I'm happy to address that. I already have addressed it, and I'm going to go over it with the chief and everybody in detail.
Right. I really don't think now is necessarily the time to address the Crab Man, but you know, it's something you need to anticipate.
Yep. Yes. Thank you.
And we will be having a work session next week where we'll be discussing not just your races, but all races in the future. So please come and participate if you feel.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Yeah, it isn't just your race.
Absolutely understand. My races don't fit into the, you know, the issue of these five, you know, mine's a half marathon. It's, they're different, so, and I'm perfectly willing to always address. I like, I live here.
Right.
I love it here. I love bringing people here. I love the positive impact that it has on the town. I'm always willing to address it. I think everything can run cohesively and smoothly, and everybody can be happy with all the events.
I'd just like to put things in perspective here, if I may. I applaud you for running a business that has been successful in this town. I also received a couple of phone calls regarding this, and I have to agree with Rachel and Carol. I don't think the March 8th issue is the bigger issue. It's going to be the later one. But the one thing that I want to point out that's important is we are a community that's healthy places by design.
I'm sorry, Isba?
Healthy places by design.
Yep.
And anything that will improve the quality of living and lifestyle, I think we need to support based on some of the funding that we get. But we also need to be cognizant of our neighbors down there. I don't think March 8th is going to be a big deal for you. I really don't. I think it's going to be absolutely, absolutely fine. But I do respect the opinions of other business owners as well. And, you know, being a profit versus nonprofit, you know, there's some pros and cons there. But I will never negate what you're trying to do to either raise money or to keep people healthy. That's important to us and our community.
I do what I do, not profit and nonprofit doesn't mean you make more money or less. It's simply a tax structure. It's easier for me to move through my business on a day-to-day basis. I'm just one woman out to change people's lives. I sit on the board of a nonprofit. It can be cumbersome. It can be slow. And I'm just one woman out to do what I do. And I make a great contribution to the Friends of South Kingstown. I work diligently to give back in every way possible, so.
Actually, if I read correctly, I think you've made a contribution of just about $15,000.
I have. And it's important to me. And again, I may be for profit, doesn't mean I make a big, I don't do what I do to make my, I do what I do because I change people's lives every single day. So I understand all of the concerns. I also understand the impact on people's lives that I have every single day, so.
I have heard you make a contribution in the summer. Do you also make one in March?
It's one big one.
One big one that you give in the summer?
Just after the season. You know, it's for the Oceans Run and the Crab Man together.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right. Do I hear a motion on this?
Well, I think it's possible that there's more people that want to speak on this because we did receive a few communications. Maybe you should ask if anybody else is here that wants to speak on it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Oh, you're, thank you.
Is there anybody from the public who would want to comment on this item?
Bob Fox, 245 Blackberry Hill Road, and I own Matunik Surf Shop, so I'm down in Matunik all the time. And again, the March 8th isn't going to be an issue, and I'm not going to take time now for the July 26th one, but with, I will attend the workshop, and then we'll take those issues up then.
And that will be next Tuesday, by the way. 7:00 here. Further, sir Becken? Now please state your name and speaking of.
Glenn Edison from Green Hill. I own three different businesses, one in South Kingstown and two in Charleston. And we have a whole, and the one in Charleston happens to be a hardware store. I have a parade that goes, blocks up my whole store and everything else. I look at it as being an opportunity for everyone to know that my store is there. I realize it's for Memorial Day. They go there, they line up. I don't have one customer come in. It doesn't really bother me for that day. It blocks up for about three hours. It is what it is. It's part of being part of the community. Sometimes you have to sacrifice a little bit for the greater good. It also, about 500 people walk by my store that particular day, and lets them know that we are here, we are supporting, we let the people park there, all the parade floats and everything else. It is what it is. It's just part of being in the community. As far as, you know, supporting this race, I've participated in, I don't even know how many races. This race has always been professional. I've always gotten the correct time. I've never had a problem. I've never had anyone cut me off. The police have always done very, very good support there. All the volunteers have done good support there. It's a great race. It's a very good race. Right?
Thank you.
Are there any further comments from the public? All right. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of new license A.
Second?
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor of granting this license signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. And that brings us to item number seven on our agenda, public hearings. Letter A is a public hearing continued from January 26th and February 2nd, 2015, relative to adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 to fiscal year 2020-2021 capital improvement program, as shown in exhibit one attached to the agenda. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
No, you don't. You don't.
Just to clear it open, Abel, and then you can ask for the tommy.
Steve, can you give us a synopsis? A short one?
That was good. Nope.
I'm not known for brevity. I will say the capital improvement program is a long-term financial planning document that we use to look for the next six years on all capital improvements that are necessary across both municipal utilities and school purposes. The document that I provide in terms of a recommendation to the council is 120 pages. There's really five major sections. One section provides statistical and demographic information. Second section provides debt-related information, both as far as prior debt service levels and future debt service levels. There's also an evaluation as to whether the debt levels are appropriate for a community our size based on different measurements that are provided through various rating agencies. There also is two sections, which is really highlighted on exhibit one. One is the capital budget, and the capital budget itself as a component of the capital improvement program is the first-year property tax funding, if you will, for the general fund. All of the projects that are listed on page one for the school, for the general fund, there's 14 different programs or projects that are listed for $1,312,600. The council's held three work sessions to go over each of these items in detail. I'd be glad to address any item that council members have on items one through 14, or if there's questions from the public, if you'd like to ask for them by fund, we could handle it in that manner, Abel.
Yes. I understand from the work session before this that there are a couple items that total up to $20,000 that you might be cutting out in this operations budget that are included here.
The capital budget component becomes an element of the general fund budget that will be released to the council on March 1st. The, at that time, there'll be two items that are listed in the 14 here that I will recommend removal of. One is a $5,000 line item for the communications cable replacement. That can be delayed. And I'm also going to recommend a delay on the adult day services facility improvements. That is a program which looks to construct a deck and, a deck on the adult services program facility on Old Post Road. Cost is estimated at $30,000. The $15,000 has been raised from private sources. In view of the fact that we're going to be evaluating through the budget process for 15-16, that program in some detail, I'd like to delay that possibly for a year. So those two items will come out. The council can either remove them tonight, or they can adopt the budget as presented and deal with those revisions at the time that the general fund budget is reviewed and approved. As you know, your schedule would be that you would hold public hearings on that in April and adopt by May 1st. So it's really at the, at the council's pleasure as to which you'd like to do. At this point, the recommendation is still at the $1,312 as advertised. So if you'd like to, or if there's questions from the general public as to any of those 14 items, I could address those at this time.
Are there any comments from the council?
I just want a clarification, Steve, that these can be revisited at the general budget?
Yes, they can. And again, I think as far as overall controls are concerned, on the general fund, the council controls those dollar amounts on the capital budget, just as they would on the six-year general plan. When you deal with, you would also have control over your utilities as far as water, wastewater, and, but when it comes to the school, which is listed on the second page of the exhibit, the, again, as a long-term financial planning document, what we're attempting to do is to identify from the schools what needs they see and what needs they hope to address. The council could say, "I'm not in favor of any given item within the school fund," but it would be at the determination of the school committee as to whether they would keep those items in the budget. You would also have an opportunity during the general fund discussion on the school budget as far as the amount of money that you would be willing to provide as a budget transfer to them to be able to balance their budget. I think as all are aware, the school budget's put together really with state aid, some miscellaneous revenues, and the remainder of it is from property tax appropriation. So if there were specific questions that you wished to have them reduce, it would be probably best in the discussion as to what the level of funding would be that you would recommend in terms of adoption for the transfer to the school fund as a component of the general fund budget. But if you wanted to state displeasure with any of those items, you could do that or provide specific notice to them that you want additional information on those items. That would be in order as well.
Thank you.
Comments from the council? Any public comments on the capital improvement program?
If not, I do want to mention that the, on page two, there's also an identification of the long-term capital projects. The long-term capital projects are what would be funded over a six-year period, not just the capital budget period. It also includes all projects that would take new bonding requirements, where we would be borrowing money to complete those projects. The total, as shown here, is $22.68 million. That's made up of 15 different projects that are broken out into three given areas. The lion's share of it is in the leisure service program area, where of that total $8.9 million, 6.15 is the anticipated cost associated with the community recreation center. One of the other things that's important to point out with the long-term capital projects element is that we not only provide what the projected costs are, and again, those are just projected costs because many of these projects have to go through architectural or engineering design and also bidding for somebody to either construct those items or for us to purchase various equipment. So what we also include is a revenue statement as to where the predicted revenues will come from for each of those items. So each of those projects has a revenue statement. Again, from a financial planning standpoint, they're targeted numbers. If there were specific dollars that needed to be associated with a project, the council would have full control over that. So if we use the community rec center as an illustration, it's at 6.15 million dollars. If, in fact, the bids came in below that amount for the overall project, there would be adjustments on the revenue statement. Conversely, if the price came in above the 6.1, there would have to be adjustments. Right now, there's really three funding sources that are anticipated for a project like that. One is bonding. Second is impact fee transfer to the construction fund. And third is the use of unassigned fund balance from the general fund. All three of those are items that would have to be confirmed by the council prior to any bid award being made for the construction of that type of a facility. Most of the other ones are a lot more easier to understand, but that one is going to take additional reviews with the council. Right now, we're in the process of developing the bidding documents, the actual construction detail. Once that will go out to bid, hopefully, it'll be set for bidding purposes in the May-June time period. And then from there, if they, for a construction award, we would also have to identify where the funding sources were, obviously. So again, each of these different funds are independent. Water and wastewater does not come from property taxes. Any dollars that are spent on those facilities are coming from the rate base itself. On wastewater, it's even more diverse because we operate a wastewater system on behalf of Narragansett and the University of Rhode Island. So any of the capital costs here, that $545,000 that's shown in the capital program, a portion of that's being paid for by URI dollars or by Narragansett dollars. But this totals what the overall cost is anticipated. The third component of the capital improvement program is the requirement for setting fair share development fees for the 2015-16 year. We're recommending no changes in the educational facilities as listed in the document. Single and duplex units would be at the $2,162 where it has been. The multifamily would be at 50% of that and a 25% factor on accessory apartments. Under the recreation facilities, we're looking at an increase of $273, up from $2,867 to the $3,140, and that's for single family. The two-bedroom or less would be at a $205 increase to the $2,355. The change in the facility cost for recreation this year is because there was a $5,000 increase in the projected value on a per acre basis. So when we calculate the recreation facilities, what we look at is $115,000 of acres that are necessary, per acre, with 10.5 acres necessary for every thousand people. So when you calculate the average house size at 2.6 with a multiple bedroom or less than two bedrooms at 1.9, you come up with those figures. So that's how those units have been set. There is also exemptions from fair share fees based on what the maximum sale value of a house is. If a house is constructed with less than $188,922, which is based on Rhode Island housing and mortgage documentation, then it would be able to apply for a exemption from both the education and the recreation fees. That's all of the information I was prepared to present tonight on the capital budget, but obviously, I can go into any level of detail on any of the projects that are there.
Steve, I just have a question on the communication cable replacement for $5,000 and the adult daycare services. Are you planning these options that you could put in next year if you don't, if you take them out now?
Yeah, we've got, each of those projects have got multiple-year funding. A lot of it depends on what we're going to need for future needs. At this point, we're reviewing the communications department with the change in personnel that's occurring there. So at this point, I don't see that, that within the one-year horizon, I'm going to need any additional capital dollars there. What's in the future years, I think, may be, may be still necessary. But again, the key to a capital improvement program is that if it's evaluated. But again, the key to a capital improvement program is that if it's evaluated by the council each and every year, it can be updated. So at that time, we'll take a look at it again next year at this time.
Thank you.
Let's see, a comment from the public. Can you come to the? Just say your name, speaking to the microphone.
Linda Soderberg, Allen Avenue. Will there be opportunity for the public to comment on the recreational facility along the way, or?
There will be, yes.
Okay, great.
Any other comments?
Well, I just, should we take the $20,000 out now, or wait till you remove it from the operational budget?
Everything's going to be up for discussion when we get to the, get to the budget. So, I mean, you could do it now if you wish, or you can look at it as a component of the operating budget.
Well, I think there may be more discussion on some of the school fund, capital improvement, possibly. And obviously, there'll be more discussion about the rec center, so.
As I said in the pre-session, the only concern I have is I do not want a removal of the $15,000 on the adult day services to be somehow, assumed to be that there's not a commitment to that program.
No.
I'll make it clear that, at this point, we have a great deal of work to do in evaluation and discussion on that type of a program. So if you were to take it out tonight, I don't want that to be misconstrued as a lack of a commitment to adult day services in our community.
And you said they already raised the other $15,000 with private funds?
That's correct, and they're going to continue to look for additional money. If it goes another year, it may be a case that instead of 15, they'll need 10.
So it sounds like it would be better for us to incorporate it now and then discuss it at length later.
I feel more comfortable with it that way.
Okay.
Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the capital improvement program as presented.
But I ask that you, if there's no further questions, ask that you close the public hearing before you look for the motion.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. That public hearing is closed. I would now entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number seven for, oh.
Seven A.
Seven A, I apologize. For the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2015, 2016 to 2000, fiscal year 2020-21 capital improvement program, as shown in your agenda and as attached as exhibit one here, too.
Second?
So, any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. The motion carries five to zero to zero. Capital improvement program is approved. Item B in public hearings is now opened, a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 5, supplementary regulations, Section 502.6, inclusionary zoning regarding fee in lieu of requirements, as shown on Exhibit 2, attached to your agendas. Vin, could you explain this briefly?
I'll give it a try. This proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance are in reaction to changes to the State Zoning Enabling Act that were adopted in the last session of the General Assembly. And specifically, there was a new public law adopted that was known as Public Law, Chapter 372. Just maybe by way a little, in essence, the proposed changes to our ordinance would, I guess, eliminate inconsistencies of our current ordinance with the state statute as adopted. Where, what has been recommended by the planning board in correspondence to the council dated December the 10th, 2014, are really three things relating to our existing Chapter 5, Section 502 of the zoning. And that would be, one, that would delete the off-site option of fees in lieu of producing affordable housing production from the list of options available for the planning board. Two, it would allow or incentives for the use of other off-site options in terms of density bonuses, which is currently not allowed under our ordinance or consideration thereof. And three, that the for-sale units, market units that would be produced under the inclusionary model would be targeted to families and households making up to 80% of the area median income. Right now, under the state definition, that could go to 120% of the area median income. Maybe a little background would help to translate some of what I've just said. In August of 2006, the town adopted general inclusionary zoning provisions. That's Article 5, Section 502.6 of the zoning. South Kingston was among the first in Rhode Island to adopt such ordinance, which comprised a component of the town's overall strategy to move towards the state mandate of 10% of local housing affordability. In the following year, October 2007, we adopted additional language to this ordinance, providing for fees in lieu of affordable housing production for applications before the planning board and at the direction of the planning board. This technique is a fairly common feature of Rhode Island cities and town ordinances to promote more broad affordability for community housing. And this technique is relatively commonly found along on the West Coast, the Mid-Atlantic region, New York and Massachusetts, and has been used with some degree of success. Our definition of inclusionary zoning is as follows. That's a regulatory technique applicable to residential subdivisions or land development projects that requires a percentage of units within the development to be affordable to households of low and moderate income. It goes on to say, "Such inclusionary units must meet the definition of low and moderate income as defined in this ordinance and the general laws of the state of Rhode Island." One of the basic premises of inclusionary zoning is to include affordable housing within proposed new developments as a matter of first preference. That's meant to integrate affordable housing into new developments to mimic a traditional and diverse development pattern and to diminish what's often seen as a monolithic design and pricing aspect of new development proposals. This model applies to major subdivisions of land developments of six residential units or more, and the requirement is that 20% of units within the development are affordable to low and moderate income households. In consideration of this requirement, the ordinance provides zoning incentives, increasing the yield or number of lots or units within the development by a factor of 1.2 or 20%. And that's de facto upzoning of the parcel. An illustration might help to provide, promote understanding of this. If a subdivision would support a 10-lot, a yield application, the inclusionary provisions would require that two of the lots be affordable. And then the zoning incentive would allow the 10-lot subdivision to actually have 12 lots. So 20% required on the 10 and two lots provided as an incentive. The town's existing ordinance also provides for off-site options when, in the opinion of the planning board, it is not feasible to have the affordable units developed on the subdivision parcel, or if it's determined that off-site units would be in the best interest of the community. We have currently four off-site options. That would be off-site rehabilitation of existing buildings to create affordable units, off-site construction of new affordable units as the second option, donation of developable land for affordable housing, and the last option currently on the books is payment of an in-lie fee. Our ordinance makes specific note that the developer of units onsite is the strong preference of the community, and the use of off-site options are intended to be options of last resort. The fee in lieu is the last option of the off-site options that's currently listed. While we adopted our ordinance, it was somewhat coincidental with the onset of the national recession. We have had some experience with creation of units under this model. A couple of examples, we have Heritage Estates off San Turn Road, where two affordable units were created out of a 10-lot subdivision. We have the Glenett-Saugatucket off North Road, where that was a 14-lot total unit, and there was two units created that are built and occupied affordable. East Mattoonik Farms down to, off of Gooseberry Road, it's under construction. There are several, or seven affordable units as part of that. And Stone Soup Farm, which is off South Road, has a four-affordable-unit aspect to it, two of which were established off-site as rental units in Kingston. And that was with the agreement and direction of the planning board. To this point, we have never utilized a fee in lieu of since 2007. As a matter of fact, this option's been off the available options since 2011, based on a Rhode Island State Supreme Court decision, based on an East Greenwich case involving their application of fees. And the court's ruling said that, striking down the East Greenwich ordinance, the court stated that enabling legislation was necessary for communities to use this particular tool for affordable housing. So all the communities that had adopted this tool, you know, actually at the urging of the state back in the mid-2000s, can't, are unable to use it to this point unless they make changes. So then, that brings the General Assembly into consideration. I mentioned that Public Law 372, which specifically relates to inclusionary zoning and the allowance of fees in lieu of the production of affordable housing. There were early versions of this legislation that were opposed by the planning board, our planning board and our Affordable Housing Collaborative, and the town council, the previous town council in April of 2014 voted to oppose the legislation and community takes such position to the state legislature. Nonetheless, a substitute A version of the bill did indeed pass last July. The new law enables, but does not require, Rhode Island communities to accept such fees in lieu of producing affordable housing in new subdivisions that are subject to inclusionary zoning. The law does provide a methodology for calculation of the fee for each community in the state, and that calculation is performed by Rhode Island Housing. And further, the law requires that if a fee is allowable in a community, it is the choice of the developer to pay such fee, and that a local subsidy, meaning density bonus or other specific considerations, must be provided when the fee option is exercised. Our current ordinance, it's at the direction of the planning board. The state enabling statute kind of turns that on its head, so to speak, and requires that the developer would be the, make the choice, as opposed to the local board. Our legal counsel has advised that this new legislation represents certain aspects of our inclusionary zoning, known void and requires the amendments that are, requires amendments such as we are considering this evening. The Enabling Act differs from the town approach also with respect to off-site provision of units, in that if off-site options are exercised, incentives such as density bonuses or other subsidies must be provided. Currently, the ordinance doesn't permit the zoning incentive for off-site options. The planning board took this matter up at a couple of their work sessions in the fall and formalized their recommendations in December, preparatory to this public hearing tonight. In the discussions with the planning board, a consensus emerged that removing the fee, in-lie fee allowances from our zoning ordinance was a reasonable and appropriate interim step in response to the changes in the Enabling Act. There was a number of issues that were of concern by the board on the local level. Among these are the following. Loss of process control by the planning board of a payment of in-lie fee options, you know, whereas the Enabling Statute puts that choice with the developer versus the board. Secondly, the requirement of a density bonus for all projects where units are developed off-site, or if the fee option is exercised. The fee calculation methodology in the state law nets a substantially lower fee than was calculated by the town's current methodology. Interestingly enough, the methodology for calculating the local fee under our existing ordinance was typically done in the capital budget, which you, in public hearing, that. But the fee calculation, the last time it was run through by the town manager, was $94,000 per unit, based on the town's calculation. The calculation provided by Rhode Island Housing would be for $62,000 per unit. And lastly, the planning boards, in terms of their major concerns about it, the Enabling Statute allows for the in-lie fee option at the developer's preference with a density bonus for the mother site or the site under consideration, would in most, if not all, instances yield new developments at higher than base density, which exclude affordable housing. And board members felt that this was contrary to the definition and tense of the inclusionary zoning model. In addition, the proposed language provides for, that's under consideration tonight, provides that for-sale or homeownership units that are produced under an inclusionary zoning application be restricted to households, I mentioned this earlier, earning 80% of the area median income or below. And this, as noted, was recommended by the Affordable Housing Collaborative as being better targeted to true need in the community versus for-sale units offered at greater than 80% AMI or 120% AMI. The area median income at 120% for South Kingston is about $85,000 a year, and based on calculations for what the price would be, that yields a house value at about $310,000 and would be considered affordable. This figure is higher by about 15,000 or 5% over the median sales price for all homes sold in South Kingston in 2013. Units that would be targeted for 80% AMI, which is area median income, which would be a household of, I think, four, at about $57,000 income, would be priced at about $201,000, which is pretty close to the median value. And also, the Affordable Housing membership also expressed the view that the fee structure under the Enabling Statute wouldn't yield sufficient resources to produce new units in a timely or efficient fashion, especially since the law requires that if fees are taken by a community for in-lie fees, they have to be expended within two years. The, let's see, well, I think, kind of in closing, I would say, you know, the, you know, this is an interim step to align our ordinance with the state law changes in a manner that the town planning board is comfortable with, and it was viewed as interim step because issues relating to affordable housing opportunities in Rhode Island communities is certainly a complex and evolving issue area. The lingering effects of the recession, as well as diminished state and federal programs and resources, have added to these challenges associated with affordable housing across Rhode Island communities. It is certainly worthy of additional attention and consideration of these issues by the General Assembly and by local communities such as South Kingston. If the goal is to improve the policy environment for affordable housing production in a manner that balances local, the interests of local cities and towns with the development community and advocates for increased housing opportunity. In this regard, I think it's important that we maintain an active communication with the various parties of interest, and particularly our state legislators, to try to move forward to a better policy environment overall for this. So if council members have particular questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them to your satisfaction.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Vin, as far as the off-site option.
Yes.
For affordable housing and the requirement now by statute that there should be some kind of density bonus given to the developer, under that Under that circumstance, I do notice that you remove the old language, which prohibits any
Right.
Density bonus. But I don't see any new language in the ordinance that specifically states that they would get the density bonus if they did the off-site
Well, I think earlier, well, an earlier portion of the ordinance talks about the calculation of the basic yield and then the yield with the zoning incentive. The zoning incentive, in my estimation, would apply if the planning board permitted an off-site option. So as, again, to use the ten-lot example,
Mm-hmm.
If the planning board were of a mind to allow the obligation for the two units in a ten-lot subdivision to be located off premises, they would have to provide the zoning incentives to, so it would yield a twelve-lot on-premises subdivision with two lots off premises to be affordable. So, and those two bonus units would be market rate.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that would be a considerable advantage for a developer coming forward. Now, I think the planning board would use the yardstick as, would that be in the best interests of the community to go in that direction? I think the board's expressed preference would be that they'd like to see the units developed on the application site in most circumstances, but with a recognition that there may be times where the interests of the community and affordable housing need could be better met through a consideration of one of those other options which are retained. Would not eliminate, this public hearing does not eliminate the off-site options as a consideration, it just eliminates that, the fee in lieu of, so the others would remain.
Right. And it also eliminates the fact that you said you could not, the old ordinance says there would be no density bonus
Right.
In that scenario. But I'm still, I still don't see the language in this ordinance that says, you get the density bonus, if you could point that out to me. Off-site, we haven't, I understand the off-site option.
Yeah.
Is it a different section?
Different section, Carol, because this one really is focused on the in lieu of fee and how
Right.
That applies both on and off-site.
It's in the general body of the ordinance under F zoning incentives.
All right. I'm just, because this ordinance included the prohibition against density
Right.
And that's why I was looking for.
Well, I mean, that was at this, Mr. Assillo's colleague, Amy Gongs, had suggested that because of the changes in the state statute, if you used an off-site option, you had to provide.
Right.
So the general language of the ordinance already provides for the, you know, so we took out the prohibition, so
Right.
By removing that, it makes those other options eligible for the incentive.
So it's clearly pointed out in a different ordinance that there is, they will have the
Different section of this ordinance, yes.
A twenty percent increase in density?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that because
No, no, that's good.
This was not clear to me when I was reading the whole thing, like, I didn't see the density bonus for the off-site option.
I mean, it is, it is a proposal for, as an interim, to be candid, so, I mean, we may revisit this as, as time goes on, as circumstances warrant, or if other changes are made at the legislative level, or if there's a determination by the planning board, working with the Affordable Housing Group to, you know, ordinances do evolve and change over time, they're not casting concrete typically.
Sure. But the option is still left in the hands of the planning board
Correct.
As to whether, first option is to put them on-site, if that's not feasible and in accordance with the planning board's finding, it's, you know, would be environmental issues, public health, public safety, or regulatory reasons that would prohibit
Yeah.
A developer from putting them on-site, so then they would consider off-site, but then they would get to
Well, or if the planning board determined it'd be in the best interests of the community
Right.
To put them off-site. So it gives the planning board fairly broad discretion to make that determination. And that would be, you know, in dialogue with an applicant, of course.
But I would like to see it more clear or clearer that the developer has the option for the greater density once they are granted the off-site option. If the planning board determines that the off-site option is in the best interest for all those reasons stated, I think it should be clearly stated that the
Well
That the developer gets the
I think if that is, you know, the council's desire, then, you know, I think an editorial change, just
It's right, the statute says we have to do it anyway. We have to give them, if you're going to give them the off-site option, the Enabling Statute says that we have to give them the density increase or consideration.
Well, I mean, under six, that's being proposed for deletion, if we retain that section and simply change the language as such, would be any subdivision or land development that utilizes an off-site option in place of developing the required units on-site shall be entitled to a density zoning incentive as described in 502.6F. And that ties it directly back to, and I don't think
I think it does. I mean, Mike, maybe you should weigh in on this. It seems to me we have to do it anyway. If we're going to fix the ordinance to comply with the statute.
That would be, you know, that's the belt and suspenders, that's, I would see that as reasonable.
Yeah.
Get rid of the "not", right. Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading in two locations, one in the ordinance book and one as presented. The one that's presented, which is actually right out of the book, shows in Section Six, strikeout through those three sentences
Right.
On Exhibit Two.
Right.
So if you were to remove the strikeout and instead leave the strikeout only over the word "not", so where it says "onsite shall not be entitled", it would then read "any subdivision or land development project that utilizes an off-site option in place of developing the required affordable unit on-site shall be entitled to a density zoning incentive as described in Section 502.6F." You would be able to amend
Hmm.
That this evening if you wanted to.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, in light of the fact that it says we have to give the density bonus with an off-site, I don't know why we wouldn't, but, that's just the lawyer in me.
Would this ordinance, as written and presented, prevent
And editorially, I think that would make that number five, not number six.
Correct, it would be at number five now.
Right.
We could make all that if they wanted to amend this.
Yes.
But my question is, if we pass this statute as it's presented, what prevents the density bonus from being awarded to off-site?
Prevents?
Yes.
Well, I think it would be if the, it would be the planning board to be, they would consider on a case-by-case basis whether they would allow that.
Okay.
And I guess they, you know, mentioned that they would use the yardstick of community interest and benefit as a primary consideration in that regard.
Communication from the planning board that needs to be referenced for this public hearing, can I do that now?
Yes, please do.
It's a communication dated December 10th, 2014, from the planning board recommending the proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article Five, Session 502.6, inclusionary zoning, and incorporating findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and consistency with the purposes of zoning.
Mr. President, I might add that tonight, but the chairs of the planning board and Affordable Housing Collaborative are here, I'm not sure if they want to speak on this matter, but I just wanted to note, Mr. Ashenbow from the Affordable Housing Collaborative and Ms. Mack from the planning board are in attendance.
Before you go, any questions for Vin before we call? Okay, yeah, we'd love to hear from some other witnesses.
Hello, Mark Ashenbow from 148 High Street. I'm here in support of this proposal. It's Affordable Housing Collaborative, I've talked about this many times, and every time there was a change in the state statutes, we needed to talk about that and see what it meant for our town. So I'm here to say that we're supportive of what's suggested here today.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Mark, can I just ask you one question? Do you have any objection to changing the last line to include the density bonus for off-site options?
No, I don't, I don't, I believe that's fine. I think it just repeats what's in the, that's in there earlier. I have no objections to that. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Mack, would you want to comment on?
Good evening, Maria Mack, representing the South Kingston Planning Board. I too agree with the changes that have been made and also the modification that Councilman MacIntyre suggested. I think that it's been made clear throughout the entire process that it's a given that the density bonus will be part of all of this, and as council knows, it's a statutory requirement that we implement not only Affordable Housing Production Plan, but aim toward the ten percent of affordable housing.
Thank you. Any questions for? Any comments from the council at this point? Are there any comments from the public on this matter? I will say that, you know, I think the bill passed last year by the General Assembly seems like an affront to local rule on this matter, and I would support this ordinance change just on that alone, but the fact that it would also value our housing stock at such a low level compared to what has been estimated by our town manager is another reason. So I hope we all vote in favor of this ordinance as we amend it. Do you have an amendment ready?
Well, we have to close the public hearing first.
Right.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second?
All right, so moved. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Now, I would
Give me one minute on this.
I can help.
I would, shall I try first?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article Five, supplementary regulation, Section 502 dot six, inclusionary zoning regarding fee in lieu of requirements as shown on Exhibit Two, but I would amend Exhibit Two to read Paragraph Number Five, which is currently six, but has been crossed out, to read "density bonus and off-site exactions. Any subdivision or land development project that utilizes an off-site option in place of developing the required affordable units on-site shall be entitled to a density zoning incentive as described in Section 502 dot six F." As amended?
Yeah. But can I just include in your motion that the town council is adopting and incorporating as its own the specific recommendations from the planning board in its December 10, 2014 correspondence wherein you find similar findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and consistency with purposes of zoning, all is set forth in that December 10 correspondence. So if you could include that?
So moved.
Second?
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion carries five to zero. Where are we now? Item eight on our agenda, communications. And this is item A, a communication dated January 20th, 2015, from Michael Visich, president of, at the village at Indian Lake Homeowners and condominium association, requesting the town council not allow outdoor shooting of pistols, rifles, and black powder guns at the preserve, is received, placed on file, and what are we going to do with this? First of all, is Michael Visich here?
He's not, but there is representation.
Please come up.
My name is Dave Cordaro. I'm Vice President of Village at Indian Lake Association. My associate is Mark Leoni, he's also a member of the board. We represent about 200 homeowners, adults in our village, and about 50 kids. Hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to read the package, and we were indeed asking that outdoor rifle, pistol, and black powder shooting ranges not be allowed to be reopened. In the interim, since we sent you that letter, significantly, Mr. Bradley Waugh, the new owner of the Peacedale Shooting Preserve, reached out to us and asked to have a meeting. We held that meeting on Sunday, January 25th, and we came to an agreement with Mr. Waugh. The, Mr. Waugh gave his personal word and promised that if the indoor range, which he's applying for, is approved, he would ask that as a part of his zoning approval that outdoor pistol, rifle, and black powder shooting in ranges would never be constructed and never be operated at the range. Following up the very next day, Mark Fay, his attorney, sent us a letter reinforcing Mr. Waugh's commitment to us. Have you all received a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes. Since then, we've communicated with Mr. Fay, we've met James Waugh and Sven Soderberg, who will be operating the range, and this agreement and the indoor range has the full support of the Village at Indian Lake Homeowners and condominium association.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who wants to speak on this matter? All right.
Steve Alfred's just suggesting, just for the record, as you know, I too have provided you with a memo on this specific issue with regard to the fact that, in our opinion, that particular use has in fact been abandoned. So in addition to the representations that have been made by Mr. Waugh to the village residents, it's also my legal opinion that that use as an outdoor shooting range was abandoned by an overt act as required by the law, so.
And also, or go ahead, Steve, there's been
I wanted to say, the reason I wanted Michael to place that on the record is because what's been said to date is that the qualification is that if the zoning amendment is approved, what I want to make clear is that opposition is that the abandonment has occurred and it's not subject to the conditions of the approval of any zoning amendment, but rather based on the prior actions of Mr. Frisello Leona.
I suppose, is Mr. Waugh saying that he would not see I suppose, is Mr. Waugh saying that he would not seek a new license? And he could do that at this point.
You would need to apply for discretion of this purpose, but just to say to the public, that public hearing is going to be placed on March 9th, January 2nd, Chambers, and you would be considered to go and then to the zoning allowance to drive a shooting at the place.
All right.
I think it's pretty clear that the outdoor shooting range has been abandoned by Mr. Frisella and I agree with Mr. Asillo and if it were to come back, as the letters that Steve Alfred wrote to Richard Frisella on September 28th, 2000, that we would be, we would have no choice but to immediately commence court action. So I think it's very clear, the position of the town, we want to protect the neighborhoods and it's, you know, we fully understand that you're going for the indoor shooting range, but we do believe that you've abandoned that right and I think we had this discussion a little bit before and, but I think it's pretty clear from the history of the situation. And I could see Mr. Fay over there, but he may disagree, but I don't think so. Anyway.
Just sort of, again, Mark Fay, Council for Bradley Waugh on this matter, and I put my position on the record before, but again, I think the important thing is here, we're all kind of rowing in the same direction here. The villages are in support of this indoor gun range.
Right.
We have no intention of bringing that issue up ever again, but we're all working in the same direction. I think that's the important thing and that's why we reached out to the villages, Dave and Mike, and Mark and Mike. And again, everyone's in support of the indoor range, that's why we're moving forward on that. We have no intention to even raise that issue anytime in the future. We're hoping that we're going to be successful going forward and if we are, it will never be an issue.
It just, it was left open a little bit at our last conversation here.
Right, you know, obviously, as Council for, the applicant, I'm not going to put on the record what I, I just disagree that I, that there was an abandonment and it's an issue of law, it would have to be argued, but again, I don't even want to go down that road.
Right.
I'm hoping we don't get there. Everybody's in agreement, the indoor gun range is a good thing, and the villages are in support of it, 250 people there, and I'm sure we'll have more people here at the public hearing in support of it also.
Well, I think it's great that you've all reached out to the village and worked this out because that's what we like to see, right? It's the community has to live together.
Proactive communication is very positive.
We always try to. One thing, I'll talk to Mike about it later, I haven't seen the draft in regard to the license. I know this is the first time I was made aware of this, though.
You will be getting a draft. I wanted it to get to the council tonight and get it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments on this communication? All right. I would entertain a motion to refer this to council and file it.
I move that Communication Aid A regarding the communication from Michael Visich, President of Village of Indian Lake Homeowners and Condominium Association, requesting that the town council not allow outdoor shooting of pistols, rifles, and black powder guns at the preserve be referred to legal counsel for any correspondence necessary with, with Mr. Fay and his clients.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries five to zero. Communication B, dated January 5th, 2015, from Mara Trachtenberg, President Hera Gallery and Educational Foundation, requesting funding consideration for FY 2015, 2016, and the amount of $10,000 is received, placed on file, and what do we want to do with it?
We want to refer this to, I move that we refer it to the town clerk, Dale, and that she send a letter to invite Mara Trattenberg, I hope I didn't destroy her name, to attend the budget meeting where we would consider these requests, her requests.
I second, yeah.
So, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item C, Communication dated January 23rd, 2015, from Mel Wathan, South Gansett Girl Scouts, requesting proclamations recognizing India Aikenhead and Abigail Herbert for attaining the gold award is received, placed on file, and the town council directs...
The council's already directed the direct proclamation to the proclamations on March 9th, so I'm going to prepare two additional ones for the...
Then I make a motion to approve Item C. The communication dated January 23rd from Mel Wathan, South Gansett Girl Scouts, requesting additional proclamations recognizing India Aikenhead and Abigail Herbert for attaining the gold awards is received and placed on file, and the town council for the directs, the distribution of the proclamations and the invitation for them to come to our council meeting on March 9th.
Second?
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Motion carries unanimously, which brings us to item nine on tonight's agenda, Comments from Interested Citizens. And this is your opportunity to come forward and speak your mind. Please just tell us your name and where you live. And again, thank you very much for coming out in this weather, this is a big crowd and we're eager to hear what you say.
Keith Forhaven, I'm your neighbor here on High Street. I've come before you before and raised the issue of sidewalks and clearing them, and I wanted to come forward and say, I think you did a darn good job. I really did, and I just want to acknowledge that I see the effort that's been put in, High Streets being plowed to one side and the other sidewalk is being cleared, and I wanted to take a chance to thank you. I think you did a good job.
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
Any other comments?
Did you walk here?
Yeah.
On the sidewalk.
All right, well, I'd like to echo that sentiment. I think the town has done a great job with the roads. I did, at some point during all this snow, request that the council look at potential ordinances for snow removal, so hopefully we can get to that at some point. Maybe we can look at that during the work session next week. Any other comments from the council?
I'd like to say the town did a great job with the snow removal and Steve, I know staff was out there for like 30 hours in the big storm and I don't know how many hours they've been clocking in with the, the several other storms that we've accumulated snow in, but, you all right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
He's just putting his two cents in.
But if you want to tell us how much time everybody's put in, please do.
If I did just went up, you got a press. If Bill was gone, I, I did one of the things I wanted to mention, and I was to acknowledge the staff, because I think it's not just the palm, it's not just the sidewalk, it's the EMS, all coming together, oxygen rec, the labor division in terms of the staff. These storms have been a draw, we're still in pretty good shape, we still have about 30% of our volume, of the local floodstorms, but our alternative to closing of the roads during the season was key to everything to be able to get the job done and to provide the work, and hopefully that the tool that will be used in the future. We had blizzard, but at the same time, we didn't have the difficulty to consider that. The storm was without power loss, which changed the dimension of public response. It was not a necessity to open up an emergency shelter, so it saved us a lot of resources in terms of that, but the labor force was a real threat and the mission team that worked to these storms. I think the key is publicly to understand that we can have a work group, a little more than 30 hours off, off, straight, and then we've got to have less. And we can't get sidewalk clean within that first 14 hours of that control. It's just, it's impossible unless we have third-party contractors who will do it, and that's not something that is, something that I think is doable. So I think that what people need to recognize is that they need to assist us as far as sidewalks. I think the major problem that we see and continue to have is that the problem that occurs is palm, most of the residential operations to the sidewalk, and it's blocking the sidewalks for us to be able to get clear. That's something we're going to need to really work with, provide, provide a blocking on in terms of them recognizing that, that it can't be sidewalks that deposit more for the snow. EDM has been in much more difficult floors, we can't deposit snow in various locations that we usually would be able to do. So there's a number of things, but I think we can probably activity to work and we're certainly going to continue to add if there's additional problems that, so, I think it will be a little...
Any other comments? All right. Item 10 is the town manager's report.
I think I should...
All right, thought maybe so. Item 11 then is our town solicitor's report.
I have a few things I'll update you with.
Yeah. I don't think tonight we have any appointments to make, which brings us to item 13, New Business.
Peter Rogirio.
This, this is the matter able where my firm has a conflict, we're not able to represent the town in connection with the point. Prior council had appointed Peter Rogirio, he has been representing that town in that capacity, very familiar with it, so I just recommend to the council that you reappoint Peter to continue what he's been doing, basically.
All right.
I move that we appoint Peter Rogirio as special legal counsel to represent the town of South Kingstown in connection with the zoning application and any and all appeals therefrom filed by The Point at East Mattoonik LLC.
Second?
Yeah, this is, it's in my memo, but this is at no cost to the town. It's my conflict, so there's no extra legal fees that the town has to incur.
And this appointment will result in no additional legal cost to the town of South Kingstown.
Second?
Any comment from the council on this? All right, all in favor of appointing Peter Rogirio as special legal counsel? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Congratulations to Peter. All right. Item D, A Resolution Authorizing an Extension of an Award of Bid Originally Granted on January 11th, 2010, to Clerk Base in Cranston for a Meeting Management System for a period of five years with annual costs of $12,070, and as further described in a memorandum from the town clerk to the town manager dated February 3rd, 2015, and entitled Contract Extension Meeting Management System.
As noted in Dale's memorandum, it has no cost increase, it's the same price for the next five years as it was in the prior five years. I recommend the council approve. Also, we pay for this not through tax dollars, we pay for this through the use of preservation and technology of historic document fund, and there's adequate funding available and that will be in the future for us to continue to meet this cost. Over the five years, we're expecting a cost of around $60,000.
Steve, what's the source of the funds?
It's from the, the fees that are collected, we collect a dollar for every recorded document and that goes to Historic Records Trust Fund. So that trust fund right now has $129,000 in it and the monies that are used for this purpose will come out of that fund.
If there's nothing else to be said, I make a motion that we approve Item D, A Resolution Authorizing an Extension of an Award of Bid Originally Granted on January 11th, 2010, to Clerk Base, 2220 Plainfield Pike in Cranston, Rhode Island, for a Meeting Management System for a period of five years with an annual cost of $12,070, and as further described in a memorandum from the town clerk to the town manager dated February 3rd, 2015, and entitled Contract Extension Meeting Management System.
Second?
All right. Any discussion?
I think it's an amazing system.
All right, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 All right, the motion carries unanimously. Item G, A Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Five-Year Lease Between the Town of South Kingstown and Bruce Thunberg of Twin Peaks Land and Cattle Company on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road to farm approximately 22, a 22-acre parcel of property for an annual fee of $2,500 and a total lease payment of $12,500. Said property being a portion of AP 92-2 Lot 39, and further identified in the Town of South Kingstown GIS map as PL 1476 in December of last year, and as further described in a memorandum from the senior planner to the town manager dated February 4th, 2015, and entitled Town Beach Agricultural Field Lease Award Recommendation.
The town has gone out to bid for the lease of the agricultural land at the Town Beach. We received three different proposals this year. One was from Carpenter Farm at $2,288 a year, Twin Peaks Land and Cattle at $2,500, and Kingston Turf Farm at $5,830. We've recommended not to go with Kingston Turf while it would have the greatest return to the town in terms of the monetary amount. What we also looked at was what the crops would be that would be in the fields. Twin Peaks and Carpenter's have, over the last, I think, 15 years, had hay as the product for that field. We looked at what the fertilization records would be, as well as what the activities would be surrounding the different methods. Turf, the turf farm obviously was going to lay turf. Our concern with that was that the level of fertilization and the use of pesticides was something that we thought was not in the town's best interest, particularly with the public access and use of those fields. We also looked at the fact that there would be irrigation that would be necessary for a turf management. We were also concerned that if turf were there, because the beach is kept in such good condition, it would be hard to tell where the active play space started and stopped in relation to this, which would be a, an expensive crop. So our position was that it was in the town's best interest to maintain hay fields at that location and to award to the highest bidder for the, for that, for the hay production and to reject the bid as proposed by Kingston Turf Farm. I would note that we are under no legal requirement to have a bid go to the highest bidder. When the town is looking to lease property, it has the right to be able to review not only the monetary requirements, but also the potential use. I'd also note that if you look at the, the document that we've provided you with, the map, there's also been, by tradition, and only by tradition, but by tradition, a pedestrian access, that we would like to see from a public safety perspective maintained, where public access would allow for direct access to the beach through the agricultural leased land. That was the first time we've cited it within the bidding documents and all three of the parties agreed to it. This way, it allows people to not have to go out to Mattoonik Beach Road to be able access the beach and to have a safer pedestrian way. So for all those reasons, we recommend the council award to... So for all those reasons, we recommend the council award to Twin Peaks Land and Cattle Company. Twin Peaks had it five years before, five years earlier, Carpenter's had it for the last five years. We are seeing that some sizable increases in the, in the value of the lease in terms of the submittals. Before, we used to look for proposals, now we're receiving proposals. But we did not feel that the turf was in fact the town's best interest.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on that?
I move approval of New Business, item thirteen G.
Second?
I have a question. Steve, is this, is this part of the town-owned open space? Is that the purpose of this land?
Yeah, we bought the, the Town Beach, we bought the, the twenty-five acres. When we went to financial town meeting, the Town Council self-imposed a portion of the beach would have to stay perpetually in agricultural use. This is that portion. It really is the, on the map, you'd see it's, it's from Cod's Pond Road coming down to where the active, active space is. It's also inclusive of, on Mattoonik Beach Road until it gets to the area that's, that's set aside for drainage. So it's that area, it's twenty-two acres of land, and the only time we've had difficulty with that under lease was when, the first year that we leased it, and we had long-term corn.
Corn.
And it blocked all view of the ocean from, from the Cod's Pond area. So we have prohibited that as a, as a crop allowed within the, within the area.
You zoned in a height restriction.
I've never seen corn that tall.
That was my only question.
I think the concerns that you raised are accurate. Did the turf farm have a proposal where they were going to get the water from, where they're going to use?
They would be bringing the water in with water buffaloes, so they would be watering the grass. They also didn't expect that there'd be a lot of irrigation required because of morning dew, but I still think that what we would have seen probably is either early morning or late, or after evening type watering. They would not water from the turf itself, but from the roadside with cannons.
Any further comments on this item? All right. All in favor of approving item G, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item fourteen on tonight's agenda, which is a closed executive session. So I'm going to have to ask the public to leave, but we need a motion to go into executive session. I'm going to read it. A Closed Executive Session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two forty-six five A two, to discuss matters pertaining to litigation regarding the RI Retirement Security Act of two thousand and eleven, and Hang Ten LLC versus Rhode Island CRMC and Town of South Kingstown.
I make a motion that we go into closed executive session.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You need a roll call vote to go into closed executive session. Council President Collins?
Aye.
Council Vice President Healy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Clow?
Aye.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Veely?
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to, to recess to closed executive session pursuant to RIGL forty-two forty-six five A two, to discuss matters pertaining to litigation at nine fifteen.